I'm serving as Chair of tonight's meeting. We'll make a couple of brief introductions before we get started. Karen Jones is online. She is the Vice Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commissioner Commission. We have Janet Parker, who's the Executive Assistant to Department of Planning and Urban Design. She'll be outlining how we'll run the meeting and announcing the cases. We also have the following members of the Department of Land Use and Planning, excuse me, Planning and Land Use here Byron Toy and James Malloy. We also have Jeff Conway with Unified Government Legal Counsel and the following Planning and Zoning Commissioners are present tonight. Here in the chambers with me is Dwayne Beth, Commissioner Aaron Ward. Online, we have Commissioner James Ernst, Commissioner Karen Jones, who is also Vice Chair, Commissioner Mark Muller, Commissioner Beverly Easterwood, Commissioner Joseph Strauss. So with that, I will turn it over to Secretary Parker. She'll read the opening statement, tell you all how we'll run the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We would like to welcome those participating to the meeting of the City Planning Commission. The members are participating remotely by Zoom webinar or in person in the Commission Chamber. Mr. Jeff Carson is serving as Chairman this evening. Please note the following instructions for the meeting. Planning Commission members attending by Zoom, please make sure you are visible during the meeting and use the raise your hand feature to speak. After Chairman Carson recognizes you, unmute your microphone and please state your name when you begin to speak. If you are in person in the Commission Chamber, when Chairman Carson recognizes you, please state your name before speaking. For those members of the public in attendance via Zoom or telephone, use the raise your hand feature when you want to speak on an issue. The Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Unmute your microphone and state your name and address before giving your comments. If you are attending in person, please come to the microphone at the front of the room as the application is being called and the Chairman will recognize you when it is your time to speak. Proper meeting decorum is expected of all participating in the meeting and anyone who fails to act properly will be removed from the meeting. The city reserves the right to discontinue a meeting if any improper behavior occurs, which prevents the uninterrupted conduct of business. The Planning Commission is a voluntary body of citizens which review each zoning proposal. For all change of zones, special use permits, vacations and preliminary plan reviews on tonight's agenda, the Planning Commission makes recommendations to the Unified Government Board of Commissioners, who will then make the final decisions on Thursday, June 27, 2024. For final plats and final plan reviews heard tonight, the Planning Commission's decision is final and there will not be another hearing. The format for this evening's meeting is as follows. The applicant will make the opening statement explaining the proposal. Please note that the applicant will be given 15 minutes to present their case. The 15 minutes includes the applicant, consultants and other members of the applicant's team. Members of the Planning Commission will then address any questions they may have to the applicant. Any persons wishing to speak in favor will be called upon and allowed to do so at that time. Then those persons in opposition will be called upon and allowed to make their statements and ask questions. Please note that each member of the public who wishes to speak will be given five minutes to express their opinions. Time may not be shared between speakers. A speaker may request to extend their time and the Planning Commission may, by two-thirds majority vote, extend any speaker's time in five-minute increments. The Chairman will ask for a show of hands of those persons in support and in opposition that do not wish to speak. The applicant will then answer questions and make a closing statement. The public hearing portion of the meeting will be closed and the public will only be allowed to address the Commission if a question is directed to them. The Planning Commission will discuss the application and make their recommendation. If persons in opposition want to formally protest a change of zone or special use permit, a means is available by a legal protest petition, which can be obtained along with the necessary instructions by emailing the Planning and Urban Design Department at planninginfo@wycokk.org tomorrow morning. Any application receiving a unanimous vote of recommendation by the Planning Commission will appear on the consent agenda of the Unified Government Board of Commissioners. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the Unified Government Commission or other interested parties, the Planning Commission's recommendation will be adopted. The consent agenda is heard at the beginning of the meeting at 7:00 P.M. The Planning Commission will also have a consent agenda as part of their meeting this evening. The consent agenda is the first part of the agenda and items on the consent agenda are final plats, final plans or special use permit renewals that have received a staff recommendation to approve. Unless there is a request to remove an item from the consent agenda by the applicant, a member of the staff, a member of the Planning Commission or other interested parties, the staff recommendation on all the items on the consent agenda will be adopted by the Planning Commission at one time. I will read a list of agenda items on the consent agenda and when I have completed the list, the Chairman will ask if there are any requests to remove items. This is your time to use the raise your hand feature, be recognized and request that an item be removed from the consent agenda if you do not agree with the staff's recommendation. If you are in the Commission Chamber, please come to the microphone, state your name and address and the item you want to remove from the consent agenda. The Planning Commission is required to disclose contacts about any item on the Planning Commission agenda. Before each item, I will ask if any contacts have been made and members of the Commission will be asked to disclose those contacts. Please note that your opinions will be forwarded to the governing body for their consideration in making a final decision on Thursday, June 27, 2024 at 7:00 P.M. I will now read the items on the consent agenda. Consideration of the May 13, 2024 Planning Commission Minutes. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-024. Tina Caruso with Tanner's Bar and Grill, 39th. Renewal of a special use permit for live entertainment at an existing restaurant at 3800 Rainbow Boulevard. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-026. Logan Smith with Hill Ciders KC. Renewal of a special use permit for a drinking establishment at 403 North 5th Street. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-029. Adam Reynolds, renewal of a special use permit to operate a short-term rental at 4443 Eaton Street. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-031. Chaymond Allen James, renewal of a special use permit to operate a short-term rental at 2737 South 53rd Street. Special Use Permit Application, SP 2024-034. Alexandria Sales with Springfield LLC. Renewal of a special use permit to operate a short-term rental at 4101 Fisher Street. Plat Application, Plat 2024-014. Ryan Hamm, final plat to create two industrial lots at 6026 Speaker Road. Plan Review Application, PR 2024-011. Dan Shaveran with Westside Family Church Incorporated. Final Plan Review for the expansion of the parking lot and addition of a right-turn lane at 3001 North 115th Street. The items I have just read are on the consent agenda. At this time, does any member of the Commission wish to disclose any contact on any of these items?
No.
Mr. Chairman, please include the following items as part of the record for all of the items on the consent agenda. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June 10, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the publications in the echo for the special use permits and the notices to property owners. The Commission will vote to approve in one vote these items unless someone requests that an item be removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Janet. Also, I think I forgot to introduce Commissioner Mark Muller. And Janet, for the record, would you show that Commissioner Jake Miller is now on the Zoom?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone on the Commission that would like to have an item set aside from the consent agenda? Facing none, was there anyone in the public that would like to have an item set aside on the consent agenda for special consideration? Facing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Mr. Jones?
Chairman Carson, first, I think, the minor correction, I think Janet read for special use case 2024-024. The address is being 3800 Rainbow Boulevard, but it's 3900. So I just want to offer that. And then motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
All right, thank you. Motion made for approval of consent agenda, is that a second? Commissioner Strauss?
It is.
All right, thank you. I would also offer that the address on special use permit 2024-031 was read as South 53rd Street and it should read 53rd Terrace. Any discussion on the approval of the consent agenda with the corrections noted?
Did you say that was SP 31?
Yes.
Okay, because that's what I-
It was read as 53rd Street.
Okay, because I have Terrace here in my script, sorry.
That's all right, thank you. With that, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Hi.
Easterwood?
Mr. Easterwood?
I don't see-
I don't see her on now.
Okay. Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve the items on the consent agenda with the conditions with the correction of the secretary's reading errors passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. The special use permits and the plat will go to the Board of Commissioners, is that correct, Janet?
Not the plat, no, just the special use permits.
And what about the plan review?
Nope.
All right, so the special use permits will be heard once again before the Board of Commissioners on 6th, June 27th at 7:00 P.M. in this room.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, that completes our consent agenda. We will now move on to our non-consent agenda. We have two items that we're going to hear together and then we will vote on them separately. Master Plan Amendment, MPL 2024-004. Carrie Jacobson, master plan amendment from low-density residential to medium-density residential Plan KCK Comprehensive Plan at 3354 to 3356 North 60th Terrace. Change of Zone Application, COZ 2024-009. Change of Zone from R1 Single Family District to R2 Two-Family District for a legal non-conforming accessory dwelling unit, ADU, at the same address. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June 11, 2020, I'm sorry, June 10, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Jacobson? Go ahead and give me your name and address, please, for our record and then tell us what you'd like to do here.
Carrie Jacobson at 33, I live at 3356 North 60th Terrace and we live at a legal non-conforming duplex that we would like to be correctly zoned at R2 instead of R-
Okay, so you wanted to change the zoning for something that's been that way for a long time, correct? And then you have a you have an accessory dwelling unit at the property as well?
Correct, but there's no zoning in place for it, so we have to wait for that until next year.
Okay.
I understand.
All right, anything else you would like to add? All right, any questions for this applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand if you're online or come to the microphone if you're in the chambers. Seeing none, we'll go to staff and we will go to Mr. Malloy and get his comment.
Thank you, Chairman. James Malloy, Planning and Urban Design. Again, what we have here is a legal non-conforming duplex. We've seen several of these up in the Midtown North area at this point. You know, when they were annexed in back in 1962, I believe, they just dropped the R1 zoning on everything. So, you know, we get these from time to time, try to correct them as they come forward. So far, no support, no opposition. Staff is recommending approval with the condition to remove the currently non-conforming unpermitted ADU at this time. There's not a mechanism in our code that allows them. Hopefully, we update that with the zoning code, but I don't want to make any promises. But staff recommends approval, open for questions.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Malloy? I just have one for you. As far as the existing ADU that's there, is it being rented? Is it, I mean, what is the current status?
On their original intent, the applicants wanted to rent it as a short-term rental and that's actually kind of how we noted, noted the legal non-conforming duplex. Originally, staff was under the impression that the ADU itself as well was legal non-conforming, but when we actually got the application, reviewed the case, we noted that the original building permit stated it wasn't to be used as an ADU and that, yeah, it hadn't been converted anytime before the existing code. So to my knowledge, it's not being used. I think the applicant can probably answer that question a little better than I can, but-
Is it being used and is it completed? Does the construction of the interior and everything reflect an ADU?
Yeah, everything's completed. It's not being rented out.
All right, so it's just a vacant?
Right.
Okay, and that's the way it's going to continue until?
Right, until we can-
All right, when you say have it removed, what are you, what is your?
So, built, so this is more of a building inspections requirement, but what, there's five things that constitute a dwelling unit. There's area for dining, living, sanitary, so bedroom, sleeping and cooking? Did I get that right, Byron?
That's correct.
Yeah, I always trip up on it, but those are items that building inspections constitutes as a dwelling. So, you know, if one of those items were term or if all those items were to remain together, we would have essentially their dwelling, which isn't allowed on property. So they would have to remove one of the, one of the items that make it a dwelling.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Malloy? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, we need to take the master plan amendment first, please.
All right, thank you. This will be on the master plan, Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve master plan amendment is 2024-004, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
All right, motion made for approval of the master plan amendment made by Commissioner Jones. Is that a second, Commissioner Strauss?
It is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of master plan amendment, MPL 2024-004, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Now I'll entertain a motion on the change of zone request. Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve change of zone request, case 2024-009, subject to staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones, is that a second, Commissioner Strauss?
It is, yes.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Strauss?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that most recommend approval of change of zone, COZ 2024-009, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again, June 27th, before the Board of Commissioners in this room. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have two applications that we will hear together. Master Plan Amendment, MPL 2024-007. Rick Cunningham, master plan amendment from single-family to general urban Rosedale area plan at 4316 Fisher Street. And change of zone application, COZ 2024-012. Change of zone from R1B Single Family District to R2B Two-Family District for an accessory dwelling unit at 4316 Fisher Street. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June 10, 2024, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind-up echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the Commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gotham, your hand is up. I'm assuming you're representing Mr. Cunningham in this matter?
Yes, I am.
All right, please go ahead and give us your name and address, please, and tell us what you want to do.
Colin Gotham for Rick Cunningham. I'm his attorney. My address is 7225 Renner Road, Suite 200, Shawnee, Kansas, 66217. So this was a, an investment in a property that Mr. Cunningham owned, a significant multi-hundred-thousand-dollar investment into the property. A second-story addition was put onto the property and as part of that, a garage was finished out. There was some mistake made by Mr. Cunningham regarding the permitting process that needed to be done for the garage. And so this is somewhat of an after-effect application for what was done with this garage. There was a permit obtained on the, for the second-story addition, but for whatever reason, a permit for the garage was not done. This is essentially an accessory dwelling unit. The garage would have like a studio apartment basically in it. As I'm sure the Commission understands, accessory dwelling unit has been growing in the nation, in the metro area. And as I understand it right now, the city does not allow them. But it is, you know, something that's been growing, that's providing flexibility in housing choices, but also accommodating changes in lifestyle. That's according to the Mid-America Regional Council. In addition, it allows homeowners to share independent living areas with family members and others. It gives adults, other, older adults, the opportunity to age in place and it helps extend the families to be near one another. Mr. Cunningham wish says that the, his timing of things would have been differently, but it seems to me that most of the city's opposition is the result of not that it's bad for the community, but that it was not done in the proper permitting process. And Mr. Cunningham apologizes for that, but does believe it does help the community. It reduces the rent income that's available for the property, provides some housing flexibility. It also helps, increases the property value for that property as well. There is some concern that this will increase the density. Of course, it improves some density as there's additional living areas at the property, but that additional density helps the housing stock. This is an area that is already fairly dense for a single-family area. But we don't believe it is a significant change in the neighborhood quality or the neighborhood makeup. I will point out a couple of things in the city's reports or comments that, you know, they do, it does indicate on page four of the report, paragraph two, that the accessory dwelling unit is not expected to be impactful on nearby properties. However, there's currently no allowance for an ADU within the zoning code. So I believe the city agrees that this is really not going to impact their neighboring properties significantly, just that there's no mechanism to allow it on a regular basis. And I'll point out on page four of the city's report, paragraph five, the proposed use is not operated to negatively, is not expected to negatively impact the used visual quality or marketability of nearby property if managed properly. So the applicant does not feel that this is a detriment to the neighborhood. In fact, it provides more economic opportunity for the neighborhood. And although the permitting process was not done correctly, we feel it's in the best interest of the community and not just Mr. Cunningham individually.
All right, thank you. Questions for the applicant? I guess I will start, was, were permits pulled for the second-story addition? Prior to construction?
I believe that he had started the construction, but no, eventually the permit was obtained though and before they finished that construction.
So that, so the answer to my question is no. He did not pull permits before he did it? He went ahead and did it and then pulled permits?
As I understand it, it was a work in progress.
Again, attorney, counselor, you're not answering my question. It's a simple yes or no. Did he pull the permit before he started construction on the dwelling, which is what is required?
No.
All right, thank you. And the same situation with the ADU?
Correct.
All right, so this is a beg for forgiveness rather than ask for permission? Okay, also, you talk about economic opportunity to the surrounding area and to the community. How is that, how is the house the way that it is and what, what Mr. Cunningham has done? It provides an economic opportunity to the neighborhood. It provides a substantial one to Mr. Cunningham, but how does it provide one to the neighborhood?
It's a significant investment-
That was your comment. I'm just asking you to explain your comment.
It's a significant investment into the property, which helps the overall housing stock of the neighborhood. It raises the property value of that property, which in turn raises the property values of the neighboring properties. And so it's those sort of ongoing economic benefits that is not just for the property, but for the neighborhood as a whole.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Come to the microphone if you're in the chambers and if you're online, raise your hand. Go ahead and line up and we'll talk to each one of you. Together, okay, go ahead. I'll need both of you to identify yourself before you speak, but go ahead and give us your name and address, please. Go ahead and speak into the microphone if you can move it for you. Go ahead and speak into the microphone if you can move it for you. Leslie?
Leslie Smith.
Smith, okay. And your address, please?
The house address is forty three fourteen Fisher.
Okay, that's where you live. Okay, thank you.
I don't live there, but that's the address.
Okay, go ahead. And what's your testimony then? I need you back over by the mic, though. Thank you, I'm sorry.
So sorry.
That's all right. No, I know this is probably first time.
Um, I disagree with everything that the attorney said, everything. This block of forty three hundred Fisher is a tiny block with little one and two bedroom houses. Parking is absolutely impossible. You cannot go north or south on that street at the same time. One of you has to back up or hope there's place to pull over so the other car can get through. The families there are hardworking families. There are very few children there uh at night, especially when everyone's come home from work. But everybody does their own little thing. I know several of the houses there are rentals, but you do not know it. They don't act like renters. They're they're just family people. Mr. Cunningham came in and he took this house that uh was a two story house. It's the driveways, the driveway actually butts up to my aunt's driveway. So we don't even know for sure where the property line is. And he did a wonderful job renovating that house. Uh, I can't say he did way too much, in my opinion, for that house in that neighborhood because those houses are like a hundred and fifty. And uh he listed that house, by the way, for over four hundred thousand. And so it may be a ben, I don't see it as a benefit to the community. I don't see that it's going to raise uh if it raises its any property values. The houses are old. I think they were built in nineteen forty one. Um, but it's taxes that's going to be raised. Anyway, besides the parking, uh, the, he put in the most beautiful parking uh driveway. I will say that. But um, the house in the back, I think my biggest problem is the fact that the owners don't live there. And when they were living there, we, they, they bought the house last summer, maybe around August. They moved into the little, what I call a little studio apartment to which the garage is actu- actually attached. Then you've got this two story, four bedroom house in front. And people were coming in and out. Some of their friends were coming. I heard it was going to be an Airbnb. I talked to a young man just a few months ago and he said, I said, are you living in the big house? He said, yes, I live in the big house. And this other couple lives in the back house. But we're going to have a woman come in and then she'll live in the big house and I'll move in this little one bedroom back house with the other couple. And you just, we don't know who lives there. The owners haven't been around for months. I uh, they're from Utah. I heard at one time that they were in California. I think they're back in Utah. So if there's just this, this level of um suspicions, seeing all these cars come and go, people come and go. We don't know. We just don't know who lives there. There's not that peace of mind and level of security that we felt before. So um besides the parking and the insecurity and and again, I don't think it adds, it doesn't add. It takes away from this little neighborhood. It's crowded, but good people and everybody minds their own business. And now we just don't know what's, what's. In fact, there are a lot of people coming in with with orange vests. We don't know if they're running a little business back there. But anyway, as you can tell, I, we just have a lot of problems and they're very unhappy with what's happening to this little street.
All right, thank you. I have a quick question before you step away, though. You say somebody is living in the small structure behind the house?
There has been. I can't tell you if there is right now today.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Thank, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
And I'm Yvonne Givens and I am on the trust with my aunt who's ninety six. So I'm but.
And when you say with your aunt, what what property is hers?
Hers is next door forty three one four.
Okay, thank you. Same one. Okay, thank you.
Same one. And so I go over on on weekly basis and I meet these people that live, I mean, they come and go. We have another friend that can't kind of keeps out on that. There were four different cars. There are people wearing yellow vest, orange vest. I think there was even one with a green vest. It's, we don't know the comings and goings. Not that we need to know. But my aunt is ninety six. She always had a nice neighbor. I'm not sure why he said the second story. The original house that they basically gutted was white with the second story. How much that was, you know, and not that it didn't need repair. The driveway issue is they literally, there are different cars all the time. I went one time, I met this lady and she says, oh, I'm a traveling nurse and my two sons are going to be living there. Next thing I know, there's another group. We just don't know. You know, and it's almost like they're running a business out of the big house. And then the um, what is used to be a garage. And I, they broke some code or something and they were told they had to change it. But now it is a full living apartment. You can live in that place. It's got all the features that you need. Um, Haley and Max were the people that bought it and they had them and their dogs, really nice couple. And we just thought it was going to be great because they would be reliable if they offered to, you know, if my aunt needed anything and we couldn't get there, she, they would be very helpful. That is not the case today. You know, and as far as the driveway or the street, they did make it one way. But uh they didn't make it. No, they didn't make it one way. You can only park on one side. And and a lot of these homes where there are many people there, like my, like my sister said, they're small, but there's some that have done really beautiful renovations on their homes. They are just really, really great. One guy made a house and then he lived in the other one. I mean, it's really nice. People are redoing the thing, but it's, my aunt has a nine hundred square foot home. And it's next to this. Her property tax are more than mine and I live in Johnson County. So, you know, it's, so I don't see the benefit of this, especially that you don't know the people that are coming and going all the time. And that's for me, for my, I mean, mine is my aunt and her safety and the taxes, you know, so that's all I have to say.
All right, thank you both. Yes, sir. And welcome back. You were here last month.
Yeah.
All right.
Adam Von Drack, uh, forty three oh eight Fisher Street. Um, so kind of to go off of what they were saying, there already is parking issues. My driveway gets blocked half the time. Um, I kind of know what the operation is that they are running out of there. The owner of at least the house, and I think Max still part owns the house, probably in a part partnership because I think it's Garrett and Cunningham. They're short term renting to their employees that come in from Utah in like a six month or a six week timeframe, and then they bring somebody else in. Um, from our meeting, that was the neighborhood meeting, they said they're going to put three people in the ADU and in a four bedroom house as well. So that's seven people in one property that was designed in an area for single family homes, which is kind of obviously goes against it. Um, from reading through pretty much the majority of what the city has on the ordinance of ADUs in that area, looking at what, just the overall, there is no ADUs that are actually zoned in that area, pretty much in the whole neighborhood. So it doesn't really make sense. And from my understanding of what would classify or qualify an ADU is rear entry access, which this does not have rear entry access. So um, I also don't know how they're going to get three people inside of that ADU because I've been in there to help because there was plumbing problems and uh um Haley asked me to stop by and look at it and it's a one small place. Like I don't, it is a studio, but I don't know how they're going to put three people in there. So um, and if he wants to make it a slum area, that's up to him if he can get this approved, but that's just going to bring down the property value. You got a house, three houses down. It's about a nine hundred thousand dollar house. You got a brand new house. It's a three stall um garage, the two story unfinished basement. It's a one point some. This section of the city is Mission pushing north and West Plaza pushing west. This is not good. It's just, it's just going to bring down the property value, so.
All right, I'm sorry. What, and what was your name again for the record?
Adam Von Drack.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Thank you. Anyone else online or in person? They sing no. Mr. Gotham, um, do you have any responses to the neighbors' comments?
Um, yes, um, generally, um, uh, you know, I think the the neighbors have have indicated there's been a lot of investment in the property. They don't know the people that are there. Some of those are uh kind of a neighbor operation thing, not necessarily the physical layout uh improvement of the property. Um, and so um, you know, the 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 new owners, the property would, you know, eventually, you know, I assume they should be, do a better job of uh of communicating with them, but that would be up to them to under, to to that, with that relationship. This is just the physical aspect of it. And uh even then, um, you know, sometimes people just don't know their neighbors. I don't, I don't know what to say about that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion meeting. We'll go to Mr. Malloy and get his comments on this case.
Thank you, Chairman. James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, again, this is this is a similar situation to the last one. Um, you know, where an unpermitted AD was, a a garage was converted into a AD without permits. Um, unlike the other case, though, where it was also legal nonconforming duplex, this is a single family home with an ADU. Um, so wait, at very least have a zoning district. It could fall under. Granted, still doesn't meet the intent of that zoning district, but there's at least a way to do it. Um, but um, this is in Rosedale, um, kind of between Rainbow Mission, forty seventh and forty third. Um, like, um, master plan has this area designated entirely a single family. Um, so far, we've had no support. Um, we hadn't had any formal opposition until tonight. Um, staff's recommending denial for a variety of reasons. Um, one, just the fact that the property itself, yeah, I mean, it doesn't look like it can handle two units on there. Um, it's a single, single load driveway, so you know, you're inevitably going to have more parking on the street and that street already has a significant amount of parking. I mean, even during our site, site visits, staff had had trouble parking in parking on that street. We had to park in front and block the driveway of the subject property. So um, yeah, we're recommending denial of both the change of zone and master plan. We have conditions of approval if need be, including get the proper permits.
All right, thank you. Questions for Mr. Malloy? So, sorry. Mr. Straws?
I just got a question. I, as far as I know, and I could be wrong, we, we don't allow um, a second living structure on the property citywide, right? That's not it. We don't have a code for that, do we?
Um, at the moment, there isn't, there isn't any ordinance or allowance for an accessory dwelling unit besides a new construction per the narrow law design guidelines, but in this case, this isn't a new construction. Um, the only way it could be allowed is by a change of zone to R two, but again, R two was designated for specifically two units attached, not two detached units.
Okay, I just know in the past, we've had one of our stipulations on any accessory structure is that it doesn't have any living, no dwelling. You can't put a like a a detached car garage with an above apartment above it. That that's been kind of since I've been on the commission. That's what we've told anybody wanting to do a detached unit. So I just want to make sure from a consistency perspective, I'm thinking of that in the right manner.
Right, and that, and that's correct. And and that's why staff is recommending denial of this application.
Okay.
Other questions? Uh, Commissioner Jones?
So could they even pursue getting the appropriate permits given the whole situation?
So, could you repeat the first part of that?
I'm sorry.
Could you repeat your question, Commissioner Jones?
Could they even pursue getting proper permits given the the circumstances?
Yep, so if you were to approve a change of zone to R two, then they would need to get permits or revise the permits issued for that to legally make it a dwelling unit?
Was that your question, Commissioner Jones, or?
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. Other questions? If not, I will stand for a motion when ready. I will need two. One is on the master plan amendment. Commissioner Straws?
I'm going to take a stab at this, but I'm going to recommend denial of MPL twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven uh due to um, number one, staff comments and the lack of permitting process for an R two dwelling on an R one in a detached structure.
Would that be neighborhood incompatible?
Compatibility, yes, neighborhood incompatibility.
All right. Thank you. Motion made for denial by Commissioner Straws uh due to staff comments, neighborhood incompatibility and lack of uh permitting. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller? Commissioner Moller?
Mark?
I s- Okay, I got it.
He's, he's nodding his head, so we're going to take that as a, as a yay.
Okay, Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of the master plan amendment, MPL twenty twenty four dash zero zero seven for the reasons outlined in the staff report and summarized by the maker passes seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, and now I'll need one on the change of zone. Commissioner Straws?
And recommend denial for change of zone twenty twenty four dash zero one two according to the comments in the staff report, neighborhood compatibility and lack of permitting.
All right, thank you. Motion made for denial by Commissioner Straws. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. And that, that motion for denial uh was substantiated by comments from the maker of the motion. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call?
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of change of zone COZ twenty twenty four dash zero one two, subject to the reasons listed in the staff report and summarized by the maker of the motion passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. Gentlemen, this will be heard once again June twenty seventh at seven P M before the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that's going to take us now to our special use permit application. The first one is SP twenty twenty four dash zero one four, Casam Muse, I'm sorry, Mullenex, special use permit to operate a short term rental at seven oh six North Seventeenth Street. Please includes the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind on echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Mr. Chairman, this application was held over from last month's meeting for the applicant and staff to come to clarification as to exactly what was being requested. So the testimony from last month is already on record.
All right, thank you. Ms. Mullenex?
Hello.
Hi.
Good evening. Thank you all for your time. Um, my name is Kaissa Mullenex. I live at seven six, seven zero six North Seventeenth Street and I'm here tonight to request a permit for short term rental of my home. Um, to start to properly apply for a short term rental licensure, um, I opened up Kaissa Mullenex LLC. Um, I understand that this confused some of my neighbors at the last city commission meeting, but I want to make it clear that the LLC is to keep everyone safe, to keep me accountable as a law abiding, taxpaying citizen and business owner. I'm the only employee under that LLC. I want to share a little bit about myself. I was born and raised in Kansas. I got both of my college degrees in Kansas. After graduation, I got a job at the children's campus of Kansas City, Kansas in Strawberry Hill. This job allowed me to get to know the neighborhood and I fell in love with it. I knew I wanted to buy a home in K C K and I ended up purchasing my nineteen twenties home in the Cathedral neighborhood in twenty twenty. I say all this to make it clear that I have cared about and been an active member of this community for seven years now. A little bit about my business plan. I plan to use the Airbnb and Furnish Finder platforms to market my home. On these platforms, I will market to groups of women visiting Kansas City for bachelorette weekends or bridal parties for wedding weekends. I plan to market to families that are in town for family reunions or family vacations. Potentially, I could also market to visiting doctors, nurses and medical professionals who are in K C on short term contracts. Furnish Fire Finder requires background checks for all users. Airbnb does not, but they do provide specific safety steps for vetting. This platform tracks hosts, reviews and reviews user history. I will critically look at individual profiles and ask questions as I vet guests. I will also make guests aware of the maximum occupancy, um, parking, the no events rule and quiet hours before booking. My home currently has security cameras at all points of entry. Those will remain and I will consistently check them. If guests break the rules that they'll be asked to leave and I will contact um the police if a situation occurs that might need that presence. Um, my home is large. It's just over two thousand six hundred square feet. The driveway spans the entire property and can comfortably fit three cars. There is also a one car garage, one car carport and a lot, a large lot behind the home. There will be no guests parking in the street. The home has four floors, including a basement space that has private entry and functions as a studio apartment. I have lived in this home since I purchased purchased it in twenty twenty and I will continue to reside in it as owner and property manager. There are three levels above the basement. Per the county, per the current county appraisal, contain three bedrooms and two additional nonconforming spaces. One of the nonconforming spaces is an office room that is approximately a hundred and fifty square feet. It has egress windows, a door that closes and locks, and enough square footage for bedroom furniture. Another one of the nonconforming rooms is the attic space that is approximately three hundred and eighty square feet. It also has egress windows, a door that locks, enough space for bedroom furniture and a bed or two, and full access to one of the two HVAC systems in the home. These two spaces don't have traditional clothing closets as built in closets were a thing in the nineteen twenties when this home was built. Um, people use wardrobes and dressers. Consequently, the county appraisal um does not list these rooms as bedrooms. In my pursuit to safely and formally define the maxi maximum occupancy of my home, um, I have spoken with Shayna Geiton of the K C K Kansas State Inspector, and she said, as long as these spaces have doors with locks pending her inspection, they would most likely be deemed accept acceptable to function as bedrooms for short term rental purposes. Um, Kylie, my city planning case manager, and I have spoken with many folks at the county appraisal office. After speaking specifically with Alicia over the phone, using the current appraisal, she agreed to have both of these nonconforming spaces labeled as bedrooms. The deadline for the twenty twenty four appeals has passed, so these rooms won't officially be recognized as bedrooms until twenty twenty five. I did see in today's report that an additional appraisal and potential remodel is being considered and requested um for the nonconforming spaces to be changed into bedrooms. And if this occurs, it will only allow eleven max occupants. I'm okay with this number and will safely adhere to it if and when the time occurs. I want to make it clear that I do not deem myself as qualified to define proper occupancy for any space. I also want to say that due to the nonconforming rooms, the path for safely and formally defining this number hasn't been clear. I have actively pursued the expertise of city planning folks, the folks at the county appraisal office and the state because safety is the most important thing to me. As you'll see in the most recent report, fourteen is what was listed. Fourteen is possible, but if fourteen is not fourteen is not considered appropriate, I'm a hundred percent okay with that. Um, before the city commission meeting on May thirteenth, I communicated that seven maximum occupants was acceptable via email to my case manager Kylie. That is a rule that I'm willing to adhere to. I was willing to adhere to then standing here today. I'm still more than willing to accept it. Um, I grew up with a grandfather who was a fire chief, so I understand the importance of clearly defining this number and upholding it. As a business owner, I want to use as much of my space as I can, but if my business is not safe, it isn't acceptable. My pursuit of figuring out um, the best use of these nonconforming rooms was simply to deem if they are safe, if it is safe to rent those spaces. If it isn't, it isn't, and if I can't, I won't. Um, many folks are conducting short term rentals unlicensed, and I'm here pursuing this licensure because I value ethic, safety, accountability and transparency. Um, I've always valued my neighborhood and the safety of it. My neighborhood's safety is my safety. Um, I'm willing to answer any follow up questions you might have, but I want to request that you please consider approving my application. I commit to here adhering to seven maximum occupants and everything less, everything else listed um under the staff recommendation per city commission approval. Um, yeah, thanks again, and thanks thanks for your service in the city.
All right. Well, thank you very much. And I just want to clarify, we're we're at, you're asking for seven max, correct?
Seven max.
All right, thank you. And I applaud the fact that you called the appraisers office and told them you had more bedrooms than what they showed. Nobody does that.
Yeah, they seem.
I'm a little shocked. I mean, kudos and some points just for that. I'm sure there's somebody at the appraisers department shaking their head going, hey, come over here, listen to what I just heard. So thank you. Thank you for that and your and your honesty. So, okay, with that, I will open it up for questions. Anyone on the commission have questions? Okay, seeing none at this point, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case? Okay, in favor or in opposition, come forward if you're in the chambers and raise your hand if you're online. Yes, sir. Your name and address, please.
William Brightenstein, seven oh five North Seventeenth Street, Kansas City, Kansas. And I'm uh, there were two, there was a petition mailed in with over twenty five signatures opposed to this from the neighbors, north and south on Seventeenth Street. There were also several letters mailed in opposing this uh change of zoning. The quality of the neighborhood is because it's a family neighborhood. All the homes there are families. There are small children around. There are two grade schools in the area. There's a high school in the area. Uh, the parking would be, it's a single lane driveway. They'd have to move all the cars in and out every time they wanted to change. So someone's gonna be parking on the street. Currently, parking's at a premium. I don't park on Seventeenth Street. Half the time I have to pull up around the corner to Barnett. I don't get to look at my car in front of my house. I don't know. There are safety issues there. Uh, the uh quality of the neighborhood, as I said, was because it's all families. All the people care about it. All people know each other. We're inviting strangers in, even though that they say that they're checked or checked by a third party. I'm not sure if they're as concerned about the criminal side as they are the finance side. Uh, I don't think it's a good idea. I just don't. And my neighbors agree with me. And that's about it, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. Uh, Ms. Mullenex, is there anything you want to address based on neighbor neighbor comments?
Yeah, I just want to say I will be on the property, so the safety of my house affects me too. Um, and that there is plenty of parking off of the street.
And so you will be right residing in the property while people are there, is that correct?
Yes.
All right, all right. Anything else you wanted to add? All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Mr. Malloy and get his comment.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, again, we got a short term rental here in the Cathedral neighborhood, just a block off of uh Eighteenth Street here. Um, you know, this is within the central uh central area plan, property zoned R one B. Um, we've had no support. Um, previously at the last uh city planning commission, we had two people that spoke in opposition there, one tonight. We also received two letters of opposition. We hadn't received a petition yet. Um, again, if an official test petition were to be filed, they would have to come to our office, get the proper paperwork, but to date, we've not received anything of that sort. Um, but kind of speaking to the applicant's point, um, staff has recommended denial because the applicant's asked for well over seven, you know, even as late as June fourth, so last week. Um, at first the number was up to twenty one, then it was down to fourteen, so there's still been a little bit of there's there's still been a little bit of a lack of clarity on what the applicant's wanting to do. Um, as it stands now, you know, it's appraised as a three bedroom, three bath house, so we would recommend no more than seven people. If it were to be appealed next year and go up to a five bedroom house, we would still only recommend up to eleven people. Um, and and then three cars regardless, um, because even even six cars and a, you know, even six cars in the driveway is still gonna still gonna create a bit of a condition of overcrowding. So at the moment, given everything we've received from the applicant, um, staff's recommending denial. We do have conditions of approval if need be.
All right, thank you. Questions for staff? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready. Make motion. Commissioner Beth?
I move to deny special use permit twenty twenty four zero one four based on it doesn't fit the character of the neighborhood.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Beth for denial uh due to neighborhood conformance. Is there a second? Commissioner Ernst, is that a second?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Motion's been made for denial and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mister Chairman, can I just ask for clarification? Um, there are five reasons listed in the staff report that staff is recommending denial. Um, and Mister Beth, are you saying that those are the reasons that you're making the motion?
Yes, based on the staff recommendations in the report.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you for that clarification. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Hi.
Ernst?
Hi.
Jones?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Muller?
Hi.
Straws?
No.
Ward?
No.
Mister Chairman, that motion to recommend denial of this application, subject to the conditions or I'm sorry, su- subject to the reasons listed in the staff report passes five in favor and two opposed.
All right, thank you. This will be heard again June twenty seventh at seven P M in this room with the Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit S P twenty twenty four dash zero one eight. Will Anderson with B H C Rhodes, special use permit for an event space at seven thirteen Osage Avenue. There was a previous special use permit on the property that expired on October twenty fifth, twenty twenty three. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty four. The application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Yes. Go ahead. Uh, Commissioner Ward, I I spoke with the owners of the property today.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you. Janet, are you done?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Peterson. You would please name an address and tell us what you'd like to do.
Chairman Carson, I am pitch hitting for Will Anderson. I thought I'd make that clear. Um, my name is Pete Peterson. My address is seven forty eight Ann Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh one. Members of the commission, Mr. Conway. Um, uh, some, eight years ago, I represented uh Bob Eikoff and his daughter Terry when they first got the special use permit uh for this uh event hall at seven thirteen Osage. Uh, since uh twenty sixteen and the twenty two months following, I would just state that uh Terry had a hundred and sixteen events at uh that event hall, which uh I think only proves that not only is it a great addition to the Armoredale area, but for Kansas City, Kansas to have an inner city event hall. And furthermore, during the entire existence of the uh permit and the first extension in twenty eighteen, there have been no police calls, no violations, no citations whatsoever. However, uh, we do apologize for letting the uh special use permit lapse. Uh, Terry's a single mother of three. Uh, that not is not an excuse in and of itself. Uh, her father started sort of a new business which she's become involved with. And the thing that really skewed this whole situation was COVID. Uh, the event hall was closed for over two years because naturally along with a lot of other places, they could not uh get together. So we were coming back now to ask, uh, as you said earlier, for not permission but forgiveness. But uh, we would like to uh state that in the uh staff report, which I'd like to thank Mister Malloy for, uh, no one appeared at the neighborhood meeting. Uh, there's uh, we've had no notice of opposition. Um, there have uh been extended funds uh used to get this place up and running to begin with, and there will be considerable funds in the future uh expended to comply with all of the stipulations required by the uh staff report, which we have agreed to wholeheartedly, except for one little nuance. Uh, staff suggested that uh the permit, if you agree to extend it or or grant it, would only be for two years. We would ask sincerely for a five year as we had before because of two main reasons, uh, one being for all of the money that there's going to have to be spent to uh bring it up to standards that uh staff wants. But more importantly, I don't know if any of you have been involved with planning a wedding, but in this day and age, uh, Mister Carson, you know, uh, well, personally, I, we planned one of our sons and at uh two weeks before the uh hall filed bankruptcy, not this hall, it wasn't in existence, but uh, I mean, you know, you get all kinds of things. So uh, people do actually plan two years in advance uh for not only weddings, but for other uh get togethers, retirement parties, eightieth birthday parties, that type of thing. And that's the kind of thing Terry is going to concentrate mainly on wedding uh receptions, but uh not just big ho downs, uh, or anything like that. So uh, with that said, uh, we would naturally entertain any questions. Mister John Simpson with B H C is on the Zoom with us if there's any technical questions that uh that arise. Uh, that is uh above my pay grade and I'm not really that familiar with.
All right.
That is our presentation.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Um, after speaking with Terry today, I just wanted to be able to verify since the since the uh permit expired in October of last year, um, there have been no parties at the facility. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, just want to make sure that was verified, verified.
Okay, anyone else? Any other questions? All right, seeing none, we'll go to the audience. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward if you're in the chambers. If you're online, just raise your hand, please. Seeing no one, we'll go, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We'll go to Mister Malloy and get his comment.
Thank you, Chairman James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, again, this is an event hall down in Armoredale, right next, uh, right near something, Osage Avenue. Um, um, staff's had no support, no oppositions, uh, no notices of violation on the property. If approved, this would be the third approval. Um, as we stated, um, the previous S U P expired in October of last year. So due to that lapse, we are only recommending two years, you know, as we have with other uses, just to stay consistent here. Um, but staff recommends approval for two years with conditions, including they have to come and get a change of zone at a plat. Um, as you can see here, um, there is supposed to be an alleyway running across the rear of the property there. Um, that's been paved over, made into a driveway, so to. That's been paved over, made into a driveway. So to correct that, get everything into conformance. The applicant, and they already have filed a change of zone for that southern piece there because it's owned residential and a plat to get rid of that alleyway. So that'll all become one property. But in addition to that, maintain the parking agreements from that they had previously. Do some exterior repairs, restripe their lot, but otherwise staff recommends approval.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Mr. Malloy? I just have one. If this would have been up for renewal in October, would we have, I mean, would we have had any issue with recommendation for five years?
They would have been eligible for a ten year renewal had they renewed on time.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Malloy? Seeing none, I will stand for a motion when ready.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two four dash zero one eight with the change from two year to a five year.
All right. Motion made for approval of S P twenty twenty four dash zero one eight for five years made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Muller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of S P twenty twenty four dash zero one eight for five years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. Once again, this will be heard June twenty seventh, seven P M.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
That takes us to our next special use permit application, S P twenty twenty four dash zero two seven. Caitlin Wolf with Bartlett and West, special use permit for the processing and recycling of concrete, brick and other rock materials at sixty six oh one inland drive. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question. The city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question. The staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty four. The application, other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in accordance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wind dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this case?
No.
Thank you.
Hey, Ms. Wolf, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, please go ahead and give us your name and address.
Absolutely. Thank you. I am Caitlin Wolf. Address is ten eight nine five Grandview Drive, Overland Park, Kansas. And I am the engineering representative representing Cold Start Properties. We've worked back and forth with planning on this. It's a vacant lot that has mines underground, so can't be used for, you know, many developments or anything that would need, you know, heavy utilities brought underground. So the Cold Start Properties is looking to bring a material recycling yard here. Like Mrs. Parker said, to just crush, you know, asphalt, concrete and brick that would be brought in from demolition projects in the area crushed and able to be reused as other aggregate for, you know, construction in the area. So you can see on the screen that this project is going to be internal to the site. Cold Start Properties owns all of the properties around this one that's marked here. So nothing would be visible to neighbors, residents in the area. And we've we've provided exhibits to planning for how we're going to route traffic away from neighbors. And we did hold the neighborhood meeting and no one showed up. So we've done our due diligence on that end and we are in agreement with all staff comments and conditions. I also wanted to mention that Ro- Roger Gagliano is there in person tonight. I think he's going to make his way up to the podium if he's not already there with Cold Start Properties, so he can answer any more detailed questions that you guys may have. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Gagliano, did you want to make any comments?
No. No, I'm sorry. Yes, Caitlin did a nice job summarizing this. We've been working closely with the bounty department. We've got quite an expansive land position there. This is a small request for recycling broken asphalt, concrete and brick. It's our business. We also support B P U in this area. B P U uses the underground workings for deposition of fly ash from their near nearmen power plant. And they work with an outfit called USC Technologies who does all the drilling in the area and they go underground and they firm up the rooms and everything else and be able to help stabilize for future stabilization areas. Us having the ability to be able to crush some of this material into aggregate will help B P U and help USC Technologies for road, you know, road maintenance, road construction. We're in the process of negotiating in a ten year agreement with B P U and this would be beneficial for all of us.
All right. Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicants and the applicant's representatives? Okay, seeing none from the commission, we'll go to the public. Anyone want to speak to this case? Go ahead and come up, sir. Yes, we'll get to you next. Go ahead and you can go ahead and come on up. Yes, sir. Go ahead, please. Your name and address.
My name is Harley Heflin. I live at sixty two oh four Holiday Drive, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one oh six. If you look at the map up there, there is a portion that is a vacant lot or a pasture. That road is actually pretty close to where they want to put that rock crushing place. I had questions about noise and noise abatement. I read in the application that they were going to do a what I would consider a good amount of dust abatement, but I've lived at that address for thirty years now and I dealt with the inland quarries when they had the rock crusher down there. Dust was an issue always. The other question I had was where are the trucks going to be entering that area from? Because we already have a street that does not allow trucks. And that is Holiday Drive from fifty ninth to sixty third or actually inland drive as you're going to say. Don't know that real nice subdivision on Holiday Drive.
Remember Lake Rivera?
Yeah, Lake Rivera. So that area is was at one time highly driven by people that were coming from Lake Rivera going to work. Since the cave ins and different things, the the problems with the underground, this is the second time we've had a cave in up there. So I would really like to know where the trucks plan to come in and how much noise they're planning on making. My wife works from home during the day. My neighbor across the street works from home. We have several different, it's a aging community, so there are more older people than younger people. Also, that street has a tendency to be fast if not properly under police regulation. We also have problems with different dumping and things like that down there. So when it comes to oversight, there's very little over there. So these questions of noise, dust, and what are the plans afterwards? Let's say if they are allowed to do this, do they plan on expanding and is there any limits on expansion? At one time, the government was allowed, was considering a golf course. And now we're considering a rock crushing place. So.
They, you said they were considering a golf course near the site?
Yeah, there was a zoning meeting for changing to put a golf course in public open space and had died in an instant.
Okay.
Let's see. Also, it looked to me like it would be better suited if this crush, rock crushing place was moved closer to inland drive. I'm assuming that their properties are, you know, they have they they have areas that are closer to inland drive that would be more appropriate. So the closer to inland drive, the closer you are to industrial complexes, trucking and the actual concrete plant that makes I want to say street and street culverts, things like that. It's a concrete establishment. Also, there's J H early down there that does asphalt. So there's an area over there that's closer that would be better. This area here, you're actually closer to more people or wildlife. But noise is my major concern.
All right. We'll try to get you some answers, sir. Thank you. Yes, would you like to speak? Your name and address, please.
My name is Joshua Bond. Currently homeless due to the applicant. I live on, I once lived for twenty five years on a property that they acquired in the purchase of everything on inland, I believe it was eight hundred and thirty four acres that they purchased at one time. Mr. Gagliano, who's in the room today, was a strong part of that. He bullied us out. We got messages saying your house will be tore down in one week. Sheriff will be there to evacuate you. He came up with five other people representing himself as B P U with vests on, came to our polls when they were on direct orders to not contact us through what was supposed to be a court order, an eviction process. So that is a self-help eviction that they would clearly be you know, a member of, but the, as far as the rock crushing, if it's materials coming from local projects, Kansas City, Kansas, you know, even rock, a majority of the buildings that are being demolished, you know, asbestos sighting, all that is getting crushed with your brick, your, you know, with everything as it's coming in on the loads. That is in a residential setting where they have it. The sign was posted, they own the property on inland, from inland over to the cul-de-sac, it's not even a cul-de-sac, it's just a a small turn in on an island. The signs are only on in that one area. There's one sign where no one, there's no reason for anybody to drive there unless they're dumping trash or joyriding. It's the notice for for the land use. I mean, it may, yeah, it's in the newspaper, but as far as residential is driving around, it's not placed in an ideal spot for anyone to see it. It's not completely filled out even. But as I say, they they've displaced, at least my family, which I believe is against what, how a developer is supposed to do things to get their grants and their permits.
Unfortunately, that wouldn't be up to this body to look into. There might be some other avenues for you to look into depending on how this case goes. But I mean, we certainly appreciate the testimony to have the background of how we got where we are tonight.
But the ground is clearly unstable. That road's been shut down three times in the last twelve years due to buckling in the road right next to the the property there.
Okay.
So the stability of it, I mean, you know, he's a mining.
Is a concern.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. Anyone else? No, you've already had your opportunity. I'm sorry. Okay, Mr. Gagliano, if you, yes, ma'am, you can speak. Yes, of course. Your name, your name also, please?
I'm Christina Porfren and I am on, I my home is at twenty two hundred South Fifty Fifth Street.
Okay.
Which is in this area.
Okay.
We had the rights for reverse possession. And B P U came in with no warning, chopped our poles down in the evening, put an unfit sticker. We have a disabled child. And I just feel like due to like, because we live in Turner. So sometimes the two bodies, we did live in Turner, we're homeless now, but sometimes the, you know, the codifying and things in Turner are not exactly up to date with like they are, you know, with, you know, the larger Kansas City, Kansas area.
Okay.
I mean, I went to the law library today and I have like, you know, all the and like the anti-displacement and like no one ever came up, told us anything. No one came into our house. No one told us we would have to leave. Nothing like that. And I would just like more time to understand because now all my children's lives, our lives, since he was a child, are all on fraudulent because the people that actually rented it to us before is the people that he owns it did fraudulently rented it to us. And they're dead, their deceased father is what the city put the rental license in. And I just feel like we should have some more time to kind of work on this so my family can actually have a home.
I I understand your position. Unfortunately, it's not within the purview of this committee tonight to discuss that. I might refer you to Mr. Conway would, I mean, would they need to contact legal to have a conversation? I'm not really sure.
Not quite sure what the allegations are. It could be that they were displaced illegally or.
We were. They've human rights civilize or human rights violations. I have a adult daughter that's disabled. So with no warning, B P U come in and cutting our stuff off after they've been, you know, they have been cashing our leap checks for all these years.
Let's see we where we can find where maybe you should go for some assistance. Where would that be?
So I think that's, that would be the the process was followed is is what she's alleging. So probably be a legal action brought as a separate matter as as opposed to this land entitlement procedure. So depending on if you want the means to hire an attorney or maybe there may be counsel that's available to you depending on.
My, my just biggest issue is the things, part of the things that they could remove are things that we did not have a chance to remove legally. You see that thing?
Who who would she reach out to to be able to find out these, the answer to these questions? I guess that's, that would be my question, just so that we can move on with what we need to do tonight, but still get them some assistance in where where they need to go.
So I, since I can't represent you, that's, that's not my ability to do that. I would encourage you to reach out to legal counsel. And you can hire your own or there's other resources available out there that you can get legal counsel for these types of matters. It could be legal aid. It's probably.
They denied us four times.
Sorry.
Yeah. I know. It's not your fault. I'm just saying, I just want to, when I move on, I want everything to be not from like fruit from the like everything from his youth and mine is fraudulent. Because we were fraudulently rented in Merrick Old or Inlets property.
Sure.
And I just want the next home I buy to be secured because we put a lot of money into that and now we're homeless.
I understand and trust me, I'm very sympathetic to your plight. I would certainly reach out to some sort of legal place to get you some sort of representation to see if you could get some sort of relief going forward to your next, to your next home.
The equitable development and anti-displacement.
Again, none of this applies to us and I can't answer those questions. That's that's the hardest part of hearing this story is that I certainly understand your plight. I'm just not in a position that I can do anything for you and seeing your face and trust me, you're tugging at my heart. There's just unfortunately not anything that I can do to assist you other than to try to point you in the direction of to get some legal assistance to try to help your family. But I I do understand where you're coming from and the fact that you came tonight and I appreciate that.
Is very good for with the people and it just.
You you know what? You might start with him and maybe, well, but maybe he can at least help you with some resources. Well, I'm sorry to hear that.
I've been talking to the Commissioners sites and I really appreciate your time.
Right.
But I just wanted to let you know that way maybe just for thought and I appreciate your.
Well, we appreciate you coming and and we wish you the best of luck and your family in in finding a new, a new home. All right. Thank you. Mr. Gagliano, if you want to come back to the mic, can you just answer some questions with regard to noise? Noise abatement, dust abatement, and then egress in and out of the area?
I'd like to respond to the bonds. First of all, sir, they were, this was legally adjudicated. They were, they were evicted from the house across from Turner High School. Sheriff's Department came in there and evicted them. So that that's all kind of adjudicated. It has nothing to do with this project, not even. Sheriff's Department came in there and evicted them. So that, that's all kind of adjudicated, has nothing to do with this project, not even in the area. As far as the other gentleman's questions, uh, actually, they're good questions. To the east, uh, when you come off of, uh, fifty ninth street to, um, Holiday Drive, I'll call it the south, that's where BPU's, uh, trucks right now come in from, uh, with the, uh, with the fly ash. They've been coming in that way for years. Come in, across those neighbors, by the neighbors, off to the east, they cut up on, I guess, the sixty third street right there at that gate, and they come in and they go all the way down to these areas to the far, far south. Those are all roads that, uh, uh, BPU's contractor uses to, uh, uh, find areas that, that they want to fill in underground. That area, so that area, a couple of things, that area to the southwest, the, 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 the topography doesn't allow, uh, to, for us to have twenty five acres to be able to, uh, have an open space to be able to, uh, store stockpile materials. What we are doing, I think, was really important, which the gentleman probably didn't realize, we're going to close that gate and not use that. So those BPU cement, uh, fly ash trucks are going to go around, uh, uh, on inland drive, uh, uh, where that road is, come back here to the southwest, past, uh, American Concrete Products and Fahy Construction, and come in our existing gate there, or, uh, uh, are, are coming right there off of, uh, sixty fifth street. So all those impacts that he and those neighbors had before are going to be gone in terms of trucking. That, that, that will not be allowed to have, uh, trucks come in that direction.
And that will be a change from?
No, that's in our application.
Okay.
That's, and that was, that was clear in our application. This area up in the, where the, where the site is at, it's a thousand feet, uh, to the nearest residence. As you can see, there's quite a tree line. We own property on both sides of this, of the, I'll call it Holiday Inn North, uh, the Northern Road. Uh, we own property on all that, and noise is logarithmic in nature, it diminishes with, with length. Uh, so, yeah, I, I really, this is a small little portable crushing plant, it's a single-stage crushing plant. It, it's only intended to come in there maybe twice a year, once you build a stockpile of raw material, bring a crushing plant in there for a month, and then you leave during daylight hours. So that, that area is really quite a, quite a good area in terms of, uh, mitigating noise and, and, and dust. Uh, we will have a wheel washer, we'll have a water truck there, we'll be able to wash the trucks off. Uh, it's a low-profile plant, so it's only single-stage crushing, so it, it has nothing to do with any past crushing that American, American Gold would have done in the past. Uh, recycling's good for the area. I mean, it, it really is. When, when people are looking for a place to bring concrete, to bring, bring, uh, broken asphalt or, or block or brick, uh, it is, uh, it's, it's good to be able to reuse that on our own roads and also for a future construction projects. Uh, we will not allow, uh, any type of contaminated materials come into property. There won't be any asbestos, there won't be any lead contaminated paint, nothing like that. This will only be clean construction fill. Uh, very straightforward and very low-key, uh, but again, we're going to bring those trucking impacts back down right along where the roads are, makes sense to do that, to come in off the industrial side. We're compatible with, with those uses in those areas with, uh, American Concrete Products and Fahy Construction, sir.
Are the residential properties that are currently on, excuse me, the residential, yeah, the residential units that are on the property now, have they been removed, or are they going to be removed?
Uh, there are no residential properties, uh, houses on our property, that I'm aware of.
All right. Um, okay, noise, noise abatement, dust, dust abatement, and truck egress and entrance, okay. How, and what about future expansion?
Not, not, nothing planned.
All right, so it'll all be contained within that?
Yeah, so we have a thousand acres in this area, so
A thousand?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other questions? Commissioner Ernst, I'm sorry. Commissioner Ernst, we'll go to him first.
I have gone over the maps, but I still can't get square in my old mind. What portion of Holiday Drive are you going to privatize?
Did it be?
Yeah.
We've been asked on that Northern Road to vacate that Northern Road. It's been currently blocked off for twenty five years on the, on the northeast end. At sixty third street, uh, uh, it's, it's been barricaded ever since they had the fire, and I believe in nineteen ninety-eight. Uh, that's been barricaded, so the staff has asked us to vacate that road, and we, we were willing to do that, and this way we'd it, it's, it's essentially a private road right now. It's blocked off on both ends, they have gates, nobody's allowed in there.
Here's what I don't understand. The very fly ash that you're talking about hasn't been used to stabilize that, and it hasn't been closed for twenty five years. But how on earth are you going to drive on it if the general public can't use it? That's a very vital portion of our community that's been cut off for some length of time. How are you going to use, drive your trucks on?
We use it currently.
Use what?
We use that road currently with, uh, to, to support BPU with the, uh, with activities for
The road that's closed off?
Yes, this road that's closed off. BPU's trucks come in the road off to the, off to the northeast, follow that roadway right down, and then they, they go to various drill holes to the west, and actually to the south of Holiday Inn, Holiday Drive South, I'll call it. But, uh, that road's been closed for, for many, many, many years.
This may but, may not be within your purview, but why is it closed if you and BPU can use it?
I've got Caitlin on the line too, maybe she can answer that question. Caitlin, go ahead.
Yep, so Public Works has actually marked this road as nonusable, um, since two thousand and one, I believe, is what Public Works, um, said when we talked to them in the last month. Um, and I think a lot of the confusion on us talking about Holiday Drive being collapsed is it's the Holiday Drive that's showing up on this map in yellow and labeled Holiday Drive. That was what was collapsed and is now repaired, as far as I understand from Public Works, and that is what the public has used for the last twenty years. The Holiday Drive that we are discussing as part of our project is this white road shown here, yeah. And that on map is also called Holiday Drive, and I think that's where a lot of the confusion is coming, but no public has ever been using that drive in the last twenty years, except for BPU trucks coming in to do fly ash deposition. I, I'm just hoping that clarifies something. So we're not removing access that the public or the neighbors has ever had in the last twenty years.
I'm still a little fuzzy, but you're telling me there's two Holiday Drives.
Correct.
Both of them would be closed then, because the access that people use to come down from sixty fifth to inland has been closed for a while. It was open, and then it was closed again. But you're saying there's another Holiday Drive?
Yes, but the other Holiday Drive doesn't connect through, so it's been, I mean, it's not, it's not an alternative path for public to use. It doesn't connect through.
It doesn't come down to inland.
No.
The, the, the Northern Holiday Drive opens up on the east end, it terminates down on the, on, on the south, but it does not connect. It's, it's, it's so, so Caitlin's correct, the terminology is a little, little confusing, but the yellow Holiday Drive, and you can see where sixty fifth street is, we're not impacting any of that. That's not part of our project whatsoever.
Okay. Commissioner Ernst, you, okay? Still fuzzy?
It's still fuzzy, but that could be me, so I'm gonna let that slide for now.
All right, maybe the cloud will lift by the time we get to a vote. Okay, other questions?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ward, yes.
Um, about the dust.
Yep.
Um, I, I, as, as, as a citizen, I've been, I've had projects in my backyard where dust was a problem, not necessarily rock crushing, not that. But with, with dirt move, with moving of dirt and everything else with big trucks. Um, I can sympathize with the gentleman, want to know what's gonna happen with that, because that's a huge issue. I mean, by the time it all got finished, I mean, I had to wash all my windows out, um, the people that were, people that were on site, so they were gonna use a water truck and use it about ten percent of the time, um, which, as you can imagine, angered not just me, but everybody in my neighborhood, so can you run me through what you're gonna do, try to?
I'm a mining engineer of a background, I'm a professional engineer, I've been mining and crushing rock for forty five years. I can really appreciate those questions. This is a low-profile crusher, meaning that it doesn't have large stackers or anything like that. The height of the stockpiles, which is a big uh, dust generator in its own, in its own right, will only be about eight or ten feet off the ground. These are just single-stacker, uh, aspects. We will have water on the plant, and we'll also have a water truck on the site one hundred percent of the time. So we will be able to wash, water down any kind of roads that, 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 that we have internally there, and also be able to, uh, uh, cut down the dust on, uh, uh, trucks, uh, truck wheels. And we'll also have a rumble rack, that when trucks go over that, we'll be able to get, get anything that they get off on the truck too, so it'll be really, it, 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 dust will not be an issue, and we have that as, as part of our conditions of our permit too, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm trusting you.
I'm sorry?
I'm trusting you.
Yes, sir, I'm the, I'm the, I'm the regional manager, and anybody who knows me, they have my cell phone number, so.
Thank you.
Other follow-up questions before we go to staff? All right, seeing them, we'll close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Mr. Toy. We'll wake Mr. Toy up and get his comments.
I'm not asleep for the record.
Go ahead, Mr. Toy.
Thank you, Chairman. Byron Toy Planning Department. So to answer the original question, the golf course was sited southeast of this location primarily. If my, you can see my cursor through the, where this animal testing facility was, and to the southeast of that, just south of Holiday Drive. The publicly driven Holiday Drive before the collapse. So this site is north, north of the northern leg of Holiday Drive, which is, again, for Commissioner Ernst's sake, there's two Holiday Drives. This is the Holiday Drive on the north side, that has no direct access to Holiday Drive. As you exit on inland, as you go west, it only has access from essentially sixty third street. So what they're doing, as the applicant stated, they're gonna come off inland drive, come south by American Concrete, go east, back up Holiday to the east, and then leg north, uh, bypassing what was the previously collapsed Holiday Drive at the south, take the Northern Leg, and that's how they're gonna access their site. So no truck traffic will be coming east across those residences near Metropolitan Avenue, next, near sixty third street, all coming off, off inland drive to deal with noise. Um, staff wants to amend condition number three in the report to stay, instead of staying Monday through Saturday from seven AM to five PM, we'd say Monday through Friday, so omit, omit Saturday, so they have that available for the neighbors to have some type of reassurance that no activity is happening on the weekend. Staff recommends approval subject for two years.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll stand for a motion. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to approve a commission application number two zero two four dash zero zero three, uh, subject to staff stipulations and comments, including the added amendment by Byron Toy.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones with the added stipulation, uh, that Mr. Toy just made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Bev?
Aye.
Ernst?
Nay.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of this special use permit for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report, passes six in favor and one opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again June twenty seventh at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Mr. Chairman, I think I need to check with staff, but, um, our Board of Zoning Appeals case was denied, and we, so we will not hear this special use permit.
We will not hear special use permit twenty twenty four dash zero twenty eight.
Is that correct, Mr. Toy?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you. We're gonna move on then to special use permit SP twenty twenty four dash zero three zero. Chris Schuberg with Heritage Crystal Clean LLC. Special use permit for a ten-day hazardous material waste transfer station at fifty five ten Kansas Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant, inference of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose concerning this application?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sir Schuberg, okay, go ahead and give us your name and address, tell us what you'd like to do here.
Sure. So Chris Schuberg, um, I'm from the corporate office, so my address is six five three Emmerich Drive in Sycamore, Illinois. Uh, we're representing Heritage Crystal Clean, currently operating out of thirty Funston Road here in Kansas City, Kansas.
Hang on, what are you wanting to do?
So we are proposing to move our current operating facility from thirty Funston Road here in Kansas to fifty five ten Kansas Avenue, also in Kansas, uh, because, uh, our lease expired in April, we were able to get an extension on it, it, in lieu of this process. Uh, but they were not willing to renew our, um, our lease. They were wanting to have another neighbor take on our space as well.
Okay, and what type of operation are you gonna be putting here?
So we are an environmental services agency, so it will be a ten-day transfer station, uh, various types of materials, some hazardous, others i- is primarily containerized waste, as well as, uh, Jeremy is the branch manager, Jeremy Long, and can kind of, kind of provide some more specifics on operations.
Okay, you want to give us, to us?
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead and start with your name, please.
Yes, my name is Jeremy Long. I'm the branch manager here in Kansas City, Kansas. We've been at thirty Funston for the last eight years. Before that, we were just off of Fairfax Traffic Way for twelve years before that, before they built the new buildings down there on Fairfax Traffic Way.
Okay.
Get us out of there. We love to stay in the place we've been doing business in the last eight years. They decided to move out, nothing we did. Other owners came, decided to buy out the whole building and everything, so that moved us to where we had to find another location and everything. We run a, uh, ten-day transfers, which usually actually is only three to four days, because we've moved so much material that we have fifty-three foot trailers come in. We ship two to three a week. As you can see, it's a picture of the old facility there, that who operated there, there's probably a hundred some odd trailers, we'll probably have about ten on site at any time. Um, we go out to customers' location, unified government actually being one of those customers where we go pick up oil filters, stuff of that nature, bring it back, palletize it, put it on a fifty-foot three-trailer, send it to a recycling facility and keep it out of our landfills and everything else of that nature. We run a used oil recycling facility in Indianapolis, Illinois, uh, Indiana, sorry. And, um, that is where our used oil is collected and goes and get it recycled into a base clean, uh, loop stock and everything. Those operations, our oil trucks sit there, but they only sit there, um, they don't have anything on them at the point of time or anything else of that nature, just transfer base.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Come forward, or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll close, close the public portion of the meeting, we'll go to Director, I'm sorry, we'll go to Mr. Malloy and get his comments.
I'll take the promotion, thank you. Um, I think there's a couple other people that have to decide that first, but, um, James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, you know, this is a special use permit for a ten-day hazardous waste transfer station. Uh, this is right here, you know, just south of fifty fifth and A thirty-two. Um, you actually accessed this facility off of Kansas Avenue that shoots off, you know, just off to the east there, so you're going under fifty fifth, next to the KCK Fire Maintenance Building, um. But we've had no support, no opposition, uh, no N V's on the site, staff recommends approval for two years uh, with conditions including, um, additional landscaping, which particularly we'd want to see it all on that northern property line where they share a property line with, uh, with the soccer facility, and then, and then an updated fence around the property just for better security on property, um, but, oh, and then a um, change of occupancy for the building to accommodate hazardous waste, but otherwise, staff recommends approval and is open for questions.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Malloy?
No question.
Well, I, I'd hope not. You're in, you're, you're going toward the right direction, so don't, don't, don't trip. The less you say now, the better off you are. The less you say now, the better off you are. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Malloy? If not, I will stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two four dash zero three zero, subject staff stipulations and comments.
Okay, motion made for approval by Commissioner Ward for two years of SP twenty twenty-four dash zero three zero, seconded by Commissioner Jones. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you. Any discussion on the motion for approval? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-four dash zero three zero for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
All right, you just eat by, eat to by fellows. Uh, June twenty-sixth, uh, excuse me, June twenty-seventh, seven PM before the Board of Commissioners for final approval. All right, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next application is special use permit SP twenty twenty-four dash zero three two, Tina Herr. Home occupation special use permit to assemble jewelry at fifty-eight fourteen Parkview Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
No.
Thank you.
Ms. Herr, I have you queued up, ready to speak. If you would, start off please with your name and address.
Hi, my name's Tina Herr. I live at five eight one four Parkview Avenue, Kansas City, Kansas, six six one zero four. Um, I am applying for a home occupation special use permit to assemble jewelry at my primary residence. Um, it would be primarily of fashion jewelry consisting of plated jewelry and sterling. All promotion and sales will be done online. There would be no customer pickup on site, no outside employees. I don't foresee any additional traffic. I foresee maybe one weekly delivery to property uh, to uh, for inventory mainly US, mainly via USPS. And then the way I am selling online, it's collection drop or launch base. So it'll be like a monthly drop, meaning I will be doing all outbound directly to USPS. Items will be assembled and stored at my house. Um, and mainly in acrylic or plastic drawers and container that I can purchase from nearby stores or Amazon.
Okay, anything else you'd like to add?
That, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, does anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Please come forward or raise your hand if you're online. Seeing none, we'll go to uh, Mr. Malloy and get his comment.
Um, James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, it's a special use permit to assemble jewelry on site. Staff recommends approval for two years, but do want to clarify one thing the applicant said. I just want to make sure I heard this right. Did the applicant just say they were going to get a storage container to put on site or?
Oh, no, sorry. What I, what I meant is that the stuff that's going to be holding my inventory, which are like gems and like chains and stuff, it's just going to be made of like plastic containers and acrylic.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, just, just to make sure, cause uh, yeah, though, that would be a pretty big item, but staff recommends approval for two years.
Thank you. Uh, any questions for Mr. Malloy? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead, please.
I move to approve special use permit two zero two four dash zero three two, subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made by approval of SP twenty twenty-four dash zero three two by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Straws?
It is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Uh, Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of SP twenty twenty-four dash zero three two for two years, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard one more time, June twenty-seventh at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's now going to take us to our vacation applications. The first one is vacation, VAC twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three.
Janet, excuse me, can, can we pause for one second?
Yeah.
Are you, Mr. Smith? Are you waiting for your case? Okay, we heard it at the very start under the, under the consent agenda. So you, you have been approved and it'll be heard once again on June twenty-seventh at seven PM. But I appreciate the fact that you've stuck with us and, and we've entertained you this long, but uh, thanks, thank you for this, gentlemen. Otherwise you would have been here at the very end when we left. Still wondering. So you're, you're free to leave, but we'll see you back here on June twenty-seventh. All right, thank you. Janet, sorry for that, but.
That's okay.
Had a little housekeeping. I'm cleaning house.
VAC twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three, Austin Thompson. Vacation of a utility easement to combine two parcels at fifty-two twenty-two and fifty-two twenty-eight North one hundred and thirtieth Terrace. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose with regard to this case?
No.
Thank you.
Mr. Shirk, are you representing uh, Mr. Thompson in this matter?
No, I am so sorry. I'm not trying to interrupt. I was here for a renewal of an STR permit and I'm pretty sure you guys pushed that, but I just, I didn't know when I could step in and ask.
Which, which was your case, sir?
Alexandra Sales.
Uh, James Malloy, planning and urban design. That was approved on the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting.
Yes, you've already been approved and you'll need to show back up on June twenty-seventh for the Board of Commissioners hearing.
So sorry to interrupt. I just, I didn't understand the language earlier. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye.
I'm sorry. Uh, Mr. Tom, or excuse me, Mr. Thompson, are you in the audience? Austin Thompson. Okay, that's unusual. Do you want, uh, Mr. Mr. Toy, are you going to present this one then?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron Toy Planning Department, I can present if you'd like.
Go ahead.
So what the applicant is trying to do is vacate utilities between these two lots that you see on the screen to build a single family home. Staff has no issue with this. I will recommend approval. I would like to add in the notes, though, that based on the last vacation that came through force, this is in the Freeman Farm subdivision, the last vacation that came through in twenty twenty-two, that was at home, building current ninety-six. The building permit one oh one, the amenities, the pool and poolhouse have to be constructed. If a permit is pulled for this house, this will be house number one hundred, which is threshold, at which point such amenities have to be constructed. So if we make that on record that since that time, the last three, two years, three homes have been built along Hubbard. I looked it up today to make sure that this would be the one hundredth house, which it would be. So post this approval, subject to approval, that a building permit cannot be obtained for the hundred and first house within the subdivision as a whole till the amenities are constructed. At such time, after the communities, amenities are constructed, the pool and the poolhouse, the hundred and first permit can be cut and continue on.
Okay, so this one, this one is allowable, but before the next one comes along, they will have to finally complete the amenity.
That's correct. And planning staff will notify building inspection tomorrow morning of this.
All right, Mr. Conway, do you have a comment?
Just to, just to clarify, so the developer is aware of the, the need for that?
The developer, whether or not they're aware, I'm not quite sure. I mean, the applicant, in this case, ALC, A- Austin Thompson, was the one who filed two years ago. So we would notify him to let him know, to let this property owner know and then sub- subsequently let building inspection know, saying that the next house that's tries to get a building permit, can't until they build the amenity.
But none of that applies to this property?
No.
All right, so we're talking about, we're talking about the next one.
Correct.
Uh, and as far as the developer goes, the developer's known for years, he had to build a pool.
Yes.
He's, he's promised a pool for years, so now it's time to build the pool that he's promised.
That's correct.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Toy on this case? Seeing none, anyone in the public want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, we'll close the public portion of the meeting. We've already heard from Director Toy. Do you have a recommendation or anything else you want to add?
Staff recommends approval.
All right, any questions for staff? Seeing none, I'll stand for a motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
I move to approve vacation application two zero two four dash zero zero three, subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Ward to approve vacation application twenty twenty-four dash zero zero three. Is that a second, Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of vacation three, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. This is going to be heard one more time, June twenty-seventh at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to hear the last two vacation applications together and then we'll vote on them separately. And I do want to note for the record that there was some clarification made today on the addresses uh, for both of these applications. So when I read them, they are going to be different from the agenda.
Thank you.
Vacation application, VAC twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four, Chris Doyle. Vacation of a sanitary sewer easement on Home Field Margaritaville First Platte, Lot Two at fourteen ninety-one North Ninety-eighth Street. And vacation application, VAC twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five, Chris Doyle. Vacation of a sanitary sewer easement on Home Field Margaritaville First Platte, Lot Three at ninety-seven hundred State Avenue. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file, the notice in the wine dot echo and the notices to property owners. Does any member of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No.
Thank you.
Are you in the audience? Mr. Lavery, are you representing Mr. Doyle?
I am Chairman Carson.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, please. Give us your name and address.
Brian Lavery, Continental Consulting Engineers, one one zero zero six Parallel Parkway, Kansas City, Kansas. Uh, these vacation requests are for two sanitary sewer easements that were recorded on the Home Field Margaritaville Platte. After the Platte was recorded, but before the construction of the sewer began, the owner expressed a desire to shift the sanitary sewer south about twenty feet to allow for more developable room to the north. We contacted uh, UG Public Works to discuss and revise the plan. And they were on board with it. We revised the plans prior to construction with the coordination from Public Works. Then proceeded with construction. We've since recorded new sanitary sewer easements over this line and its revised location. So this is now just to clean up to request that the former easements are vacated. So that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Seeing no one, we'll go to staff and get their comment. We'll go to Mr. Toy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Byron Toy Planning Department, staff recommends approval of vacation twenty twenty-four zero zero four and vacation twenty twenty-four zero zero five.
All right, thank you. Uh, Janet, will this, you want a motion made on each one?
Uh, yes, two separate motions, please.
We'll just reference the application number and not the addresses.
Yes.
All right, thank you. Uh, if there's no questions for staff, I will stand for a motion on, on zero zero four.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Uh, I make a, I move to approve vacation two zero two four dash zero zero four, subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion made to approve vacation application twenty twenty-four dash zero zero four by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of vacation four, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor, none opposed.
Thank you. And now for twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five.
Move to approve two zero, vacation two zero two four dash zero zero five, subject staff stipulations and comments.
Thank you. Motion for approval of vacation application twenty twenty-four dash zero zero five made by Commissioner Ward. Is that a second, Commissioner Ernst?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to recommend approval of vacation five, subject to the conditions in the staff report passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. These will both be heard again, Janet, correct?
That is correct, yes.
On June twenty-seventh at seven PM before the Board of Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, that now takes us to our Platte, uh, which was held over from last month's meeting for staff and the applicant to work together on this. And I want to make a change also to um, the summary here. It will, your agenda says it is for three lots and it, that was the original uh, proposal, but the compromise now has been for two lots. So that's how I'll be reading it.
Thank you.
Platte application, Platte twenty twenty-three dash zero three eight, Austin Thompson with Atlas Land Consultants. Preliminary and final Platte to create two agricultural lots at ten thousand Hollingsworth Road. Please include the following items as part of the record for this case. The city's currently adopted zoning and subdivision regulations, the official zoning map for the area in question, the city's currently adopted master plan for the area in question, the staff report and attachments dated June ten, twenty twenty-four, the application and other documents, plans, pictures and maps submitted by the applicant in furtherance of the case and contained in the official file and the notices to property owners. Do any members of the commission have any contact to disclose on this application?
No. Yeah, do not see Mr. Thompson available still. Would you like to present on this, Mr. Malloy?
Yeah, we'll go ahead and do it. Uh, James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um, this is a subdivision um, to create two parcels. Uh, this was necessitated because the property owners converted what was built as a trophy room or kind of garage accessory structure. They converted that into a dwelling unit to what was built as a trophy room or kind of garage accessory structure, they converted that into a dwelling unit to operate a short term rental on the property. Um once staff found out, we uh cited the property for an illegal short term rental as well as the illegal conversion of of that um of that trophy room, um this platte would negate, would um this platte would take care of the two of of the issue of having two prop, two dwellings on one parcel. Um the property would be split right up that driveway there. Um we've received no support, no opposition. Staff recommends approval. However, there is one condition we want to add. Um we want to add a condition that um the platte, we're not going to file this platte until the applicant either submits a short uh special use permit application for the short term rental or ceases operation of the rental.
Okay. Questions for staff? Seeing none, anyone in the audience want to speak to this case in favor or in opposition? Raise your hand. Seeing none, we've already heard from staff. Do you have any additional comments you want to make?
None, sir.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mister Malloy before we go to a motion? Seeing none, I'll stand for that motion.
Commissioner Ward.
Commissioner Ward, go ahead.
Um I move to approve platte two zero two three dash zero three eight ever in uh with what Mister Mister Malloy put on there, add get a condition where the owners would need a uh special use permit for a short term rental or cease operations of the short term rental until such thing is, until such time as they get their special use permit.
Janet, you got that?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is that a second Commissioner Jones?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Motion made for approval of a uh platte twenty twenty three dash zero through eight, zero three eight made by Commissioner Ward with the added stipulations in his motion caught by the secretary, uh seconded by Commissioner Jones. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I've got a yeah, I've got a question. Sorry for, I want to make sure you seen me. Um just just so I'm clear. This is kind of getting around what we did earlier as far as not having two structures, they're dividing the platte. So is this gonna be something going forward that people will look at? And it may not fit our residences in the discussion of approving this. I just want to make sure that we are not doing something as an end around of what we've already said that you know what I'm saying? Does that make sense when I'm in in the discussion?
Yeah.
I may, I may sound a little jumbled, but.
No, I get what I get what you're asking. Uh James Malloy, planning and urban design. Um I mean, one, there's a case where someone adds a second dwelling onto a property. There's um depending on what the context is, there's several ways to go about it. Um in the cases earlier, the first one, there was no mechanism because there's no zoning district to go to. They already have two units that were put together. We could zone that for a duplex, but the A D U, we couldn't. There's no way to do it. The second case, you know, they theoretically could, you know, since it's only two units, they could rezone to R two, but again, you know, the property in that case wasn't fit. In this case, this is a large about fifty, sixty acre parcel, and these two structures are far enough apart where they could split them off into two properties to do that. So a lot of it's context based, but in general, um especially on smaller parcels here closer to the city, you know, I mean, we don't recommend and aren't currently advocating for A D U's to pop up because there's no mechanism in the zoning code. In this case, they're splitting the two properties making them up, and they would be on two separate properties correcting that violation.
But. Okay, I just, and there's and there's rules for that too, and square footage and all the stuff you do. I just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Straws. Any other questions? I'm sorry, any other discussion? We've already got a motion on the floor and a second. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
That was a my.
I thought so. Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion to approve platte twenty twenty three dash zero three eight subject to the conditions in the staff report with an added condition that the platte will not be filed until a special use permit is filed for the short term rental or the short term rental ceases, passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. This will be heard once again?
Nope.
No, it will not.
No, sir.
That is it. It is final.
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
This takes us to our last item on the agenda, and it is finding of conformance with Plan K C K twenty twenty three citywide comprehensive plan and Prairie Delaware Piper Master Plan for Star Bond project plans. A Northwest Speedway Star Bond District, Star Bond Financing Project Plan for Project Area A Plaza at the Speedway and B Second amended and restated Northwest Speedway Star Bond District. Star Bond Financing Project Plan for Project Area Two Core Royal.
All right, thank you. Do we have, are are you folks gonna present?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners, uh Kevin Lee with Paulsonelli Law Firm, appearing on behalf of the American Royal Association. Also have with me in the audience Jackie McClaskey, the President and CEO of the American Royal. I I think the staff report does a nice job summarizing as this really is a a different sort of procedural item um from what you are used to seeing that's specific to the Star Bond financing. So many of you, we we know and have seen on this project through various agenda items over the years, most recently with the the final development plan approval back in in March of twenty twenty three. Um so since that time, we've been working diligently um on all the various components that it that it takes to make this project a reality, including that we are currently right in the middle of discussions with U G staff and leadership on needed amendments to the the Star Bond project plans um and development agreement really to reflect the project that was approved of that final development plan um and the associated costs and and financing. Uh so what this is is not um about tonight i- is anything to do with preliminary development plans, final plans, rezoning or anything like that. Um this is is purely a result of one sentence in in the Star Bond Act that requires that any Star Bond project plan be taken to the planning commission um and the planning commission determine whether that project plan is quote consistent with the intent of the comprehensive plan for development of the city. So um in this case, that is the the Prairie Delaware Piper area plan as well as the citywide master plan. Um I I know that the staff report uh addresses both of those and and the use is contemplated by each and and is recommending uh that the planning commission make that finding. So we are pleased to to stand on that recommendation and and would be happy to stand for any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. Any questions? And I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Kevin Lee.
Kevin Lee, or Mister Lee. Seeing none, we'll ask the public, anyone want to speak to this item either in favor or in opposition? Just to go to the public, correct? Okay. All right, I want to make sure. Anyone in the audience want to speak to this item in favor or in opposition? Please raise your hand or come to the microphone. Seeing none, we'll go to staff and get a recommendation.
Staff finds that the city planning commissioner approve the conformance to the master plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mister Conway, did you have any comment?
I just want to explain the the mechanics, just just real briefly, and then also Todd LaSalle with Stinson, uh which is outside counsel for the U G, could explain uh the uh the why. I'll explain the the mechanics. Mechanics, as Kevin had mentioned, was to comply with the the Star Bond statute. Uh and for the record, it's K S A twelve dash seventeen one sixty six E is um kind of a kickoff of of how to comply with Star Bond statute and the preference phrase is there is a conformance that uh it's in conformance with the the comprehensive plan. Um then, I go ahead and follow from there. So that's, it creates a the first step in that process. Um so we have to do that and jump through that hoop first. Uh and then all these other dominos will fall into place. Um and then uh part of that is uh this this is an existing uh district. And then uh the U G is proposing to subdivide it into three project areas. And in order to do that, you don't have to start from scratch, but you do have to go back and jump through that hurt, that that hoop uh to to say that it's it conforms with the comprehensive plan. So that's the mechanics of it. Uh Todd is available to talk about why to subdivide it into to three project areas if need be.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Mister Toy or Mister Conway? Okay, we'll need two motions, uh one for project area area one and one for project area two. Any questions?
Clarifications need. Mister Mister Chairman, the the proper motion will be that, for instance, project area one conforms to the master plan.
Correct, or it is not.
Yes, correct.
There is a, there are sample motions in your packet for positive and negative. Any questions? Seeing none, Care um Commissioner Jones.
Motion to approve the conformance of project A to the master plan.
That would be project area one conforms to the conforms.
Yeah, sorry, project area one Plaza at the Speedway.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion that project area one plan conforms to the master plan passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And now I entertain a motion for project area number two. Mister Jones?
To approve the conformance of project area two Core Royal to the master plan.
Thank you. Motion made for approval by Commissioner Jones. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Beth?
Aye.
Ernst?
Aye.
Jones?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Moller?
Aye.
Straws?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, that motion that project area two conforms to the master plan passes seven in favor and none opposed.
Thank you. And both of these will go forward to the Board of Commissioners.
Uh not at this time. When they're ready, they'll be taken forward at a later date.
All right, thank you. So that does conclude our agenda, is that correct?
That is correct. The only announcement I have is that uh next month at our meeting, July eighth, we will have a special meeting at five P M concerning the capital improvement plan.
Right. Thank you very much. Thank you both for being here this evening also. Good luck with the American Royal. We look forward to it. And with no further business, this meeting stands adjourned. Thank you all. We'll see you next month.
Right, good night.